Okay, let's go.
Okay, good evening. I'm calling the Palm Springs Planning Commission meeting of February 10, 2021 to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Irvin.
President.
Commissioner Hirschwein.
President.
Commissioner Lewin.
President.
Commissioner Song.
President.
Vice Chair Maruzi.
Chair.
And Chair Wilmuk.
President. Can I have your report on the listing of the agenda, please?
Madam Chair, the agenda was posted on Thursday, February 4. This meeting has been noticed and posted in accordance with state law.
Thank you. We're at the acceptance of the agenda, and I wanted to add two items. One is, I would like to move 4A ahead of 2A, since we have applicants, and I thought it's coming to us through the public, and it would be good with their business first. The other is adding a discussion item on the review process. That would be 5A, and it would come after we've discussed 2A. I probably need separate votes on that, don't I, Flynn? I need...
Yes, let's go ahead and take a vote on moving item 4A forward on the agenda, and then after that vote is concluded, we will need a 2/3 vote of the Planning Commission members to add Agenda Item 5A.
I make a motion to accept the agenda by moving the items 2A to the back of new business.
I'll second that motion.
Can you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Song.
Yes.
Commissioner Lewin.
Yes.
Commissioner Irvin.
Yes.
Commissioner Hirschwein.
Yes.
Vice Chair Maruzi.
Yes.
And Chair Wilmuk.
Yes.
All in agreement.
Okay, Madam Chair, now a separate vote on adding Item 5A as an emergency item to the agenda.
And I'll make that motion if you're set.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt. Before we proceed further on this, just to be in strict compliance with the Brown Act, if I could ask our Planning Director just to quickly publicly identify the item that is being added to the agenda, and then if the Commission adds this on, I just want to note for the record that this is under the Brown Act exception that allows placement of an agenda item on the agenda after the fact, because this did not come to the knowledge of the city until after the agenda was posted, and there's a need to take action this evening. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we are requesting to add Agenda Item 5A, which is a discussion of modifications to the architectural review process. The Subcommittee that has been in discussion on the modifications has more or less finalized their recommendations as of Monday. It is scheduled for discussion at your next Planning Commission meeting on the 24th. However, we wanted to give you a preview of those recommendations, and so for that reason, we are requesting to add this item to this evening's agenda. Mr. Priest, any additional comment needed?
No, thank you. No, thank you very much.
Is there a second to my motion?
I'll second.
Thank you. If you call the roll, please.
Chair Wilmuk.
Yes.
Commissioner Song.
Yes.
Commissioner Irvin.
Yes.
Commissioner Hirschwein.
Yes.
Commissioner Lewin.
Yes.
Vice Chair Maruzi.
Yes.
The item is approved. At this point, we're going to be going to public hearings. We have one public hearing, so the...
Madam Chair, before we begin public hearings, if we could take public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. I mentioned you. This time is set aside for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on Consent Calendar and Other Agenda Items and Items of General Interest Within the Subject Matter Jurisdiction of the Commission. Please note that the Planning Commission is prohibited from taking actions on item not listed on the posted agenda. Three minutes is allowed for each speaker. Testimony for public hearings may be offered at this time or at the time of the hearing. Members of the public who would like to comment on Item 4A are directed to comment under this portion of the agenda. If we can open the public hearing, please. Is there someone? Are there members of the public indicated they would like to speak?
Madam Chair, we've had no requests to speak from the public via phone, but we do have the applicant for Item 4A on the Zoom call this evening, so if they would like to speak, now would be the appropriate time to address the Commission. Ms. Montante, if you'd like to speak, now would be the appropriate time, or if your representative is also on the phone.
Hello, how are you? We're just getting a signage approved. Jack, are you there? Jack?
Yes, I am. I'm here.
If you have any, if anyone has any questions, we'd be happy to answer. Actually, we may ask you questions later, but this is your time to make a presentation, if you would like to. Jack, go ahead.
I don't think we have a presentation to make. I think we'll be able to ask any questions if we need to. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak? There appear none. The public hearing is closed. We're moving to Item 4A, the Bank Dispensary and Lounge for a sign program to establish sign criteria for the multi-tenanted commercial building located at 296 South Palm Canyon Drive. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the project that's before the Planning Commission today is to review a sign program for the Bank Dispensary and Lounge located at 296 South Palm Canyon Drive. So the project was reviewed by the AAC on February 1, and they made a series of recommendations to the Planning Commission. One was that the tenant signs, which are on the Bellardo side of the building, be reduced to 96 inches long and 17 inches high. Previously, they were asking for a 20-inch-high letter height. The tenant signs were to be lowered and left justified on the building, so they weren't so far high up on the side of the building itself, and that there be a consistent font, the color black, and halo lit from behind. The circular signs, which we'll go over briefly in just a minute, were to have a 2-inch offset backer so that it provided depth and dimension to the signs itself. So the applicant, after the first, revised the sign program to meet all these qualifications or recommendations from the AAC, and that is what's before you today. So just briefly going over the signs proposed, the sign actually does meet, the size of the sign meets their criteria of the zoning code, which is less than 50 square feet, but it is the size of the letters at 19.5 of the circular signs, which is their main logo signs, which requires a deviation from the code, which only allows 16 inches. So as I mentioned, this size of sign meets the criteria. It's the letter heights that do not. So this sign is backlit. It's placed on the front facade of the building where these two large brick columns are. They are tan color with letters that will be white at night. This is a photograph of current conditions. You'll see that the sign will be affixed onto the brick itself. On the Bellardo side, they're requesting a similar sign, but a little bit smaller, of the circular nature, and then the tenant signs, which will be within the building, possibly three tenants, as I mentioned, 17 inches maximum height. The font will be this style font, and it'll be black letters, halo lit. At the AAC, they recommended that there be a 2-inch can backer, and you'll see this is showing the dimensions of that 2 inches and the type of push-through letters that will be added to the sign itself. So looking at some photographs, there was some discussion at AAC about these planter beds. The planter beds will be planted. The fountain will be restored, and these are just some photographs of current conditions showing the brick wall that faces Bellardo Road. So, Madam Chair, that concludes my report. As I mentioned, the applicant is available to answer any questions.
Questions of staff? Commissioner Hirschwein, Commissioner Song. Commissioner Hirschwein first, and then Commissioner Song. Your audio is not on, Commissioner Hirschwein.
Sorry, sorry. The tenant signs, you say tenant, 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 are those three tenant signs in addition to the bank 420 Dispensary and Lounge?
Yes, the circular sign will be on the Palm Canyon side and the Bellardo side, and then the tenant signs are tenants that will be within the building itself. So that makes the multi-tenant nature of the building itself.
And those tenants, if they tenant, 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 will they have an exterior entrance, or do they have to go through the dispensary, or is there some other entrance that they go through?
As the applicant described it, the tenants are on the second floor of the building itself, so they would enter the main entrance and then go into their spaces upstairs.
Okay. You know, I know we had this discussion recently, but is there any code requirement to have an exterior sign on the building, that there be an exterior entrance as well?
No, there's no requirement that states that you need a separate entrance to tenant space.
So a multi-tenant building is allowed to have multi-tenant, excuse me, a multi-tenant building can have many signs on the exterior, even though they don't have an exterior entrance, they can go into a lobby, up an elevator to the fourth floor, and then there could still be a tenant sign for that on the outside?
So that is what a sign program allows them to do. They normally would not allow to have the tenant signs, but with the sign program approved by the Planning Commission, that allows that.
So when you say normally they would not be allowed to do it, is that a code prohibition?
Right. The zoning, the sign code only allows one sign per street frontage. So when they initially came in, they were allowed to do the two circular signs on both street frontages, but the tenant signs were not permitted.
Okay. And is there any requirement that, for the size of the tenant, to have the exterior sign?
So we worked with the applicant to reduce the proposed letter heights for the tenant signs. There's not a strict limit. A sign program allows them to ask for whatever size they prefer or they want. We were pleased that the AAC recommended that 17 inches be the letter height, because that's only 1 inch off of what would be normally allowed by the code. So we do try to get the applicant to be within the limits of what the zoning code would allow.
Well, except the number of signs, but that wasn't really my question. My question was, would it have to be a major tenant on a second floor, or could it be, if they just rented, I don't know, 100 square feet, would they be allowed to have that tenant sign on there?
If the sign program allows the three lines of text... If the sign program allows the three lines of text, we would not regulate as to the size of the tenant within, within the building. It could be 1,000 square feet, it could be 200 square feet.
And, the fact that it says tenant, 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 could the building owner allow one tenant to occupy all three lines?
Well, the intent would not be to combine all the square footages and make one sign larger. So, um, one, they could only be one line, one tenant of, yes, there could be two, or there could be three.
But if there was one tenant, could he take up all three lines?
No, you couldn't take up all three lines. So, it would just be the name of the business and possibly their logo, and that would be all that would be permitted.
Okay, so if it was Bob, I'm just making this up, but it was Bob Big Boy. You couldn't have Bob's on one line, Big on the other, and Boy on the third?
That wouldn't be the intent of the sign program.
Okay. And, um, okay, so thank you.
Commissioner Song?
Um, yes, thank you. Um, so Glenn, clarify one more time. The, the three tenant sign, the total square footage, if it was according to what is allowed in downtown, it's supposed to be a total of 12 square feet, or is it supposed to be for each line 12 square feet?
That would be for each line.
Okay, so therefore, uh, the 12 square feet part, this tenant sign right now, 8 feet wide, 7 inches high, meets the 12 square foot criteria. What it does not need is the fact that the letter height is 17 inches, when the capital letter size should be such, and then the rest should be 14. Is that correct?
Right, the first letter, the capital letter is 16 inches and then 14 thereafter, and that's not what they're requesting. They're requesting 17 inches. Yeah.
Can I stop you for a second? We're getting an echo when a member of the commission speaks. Is there a way of handling that?
We'll need to turn the microphones of the other planning commissioners off, so we'll go ahead and take care of that.
So, last question. Oh, I'm sorry, it was me. Okay. Uh, last question. In, in, in your presentation, you mentioned that at nighttime, the logo, the round sign, the word "bank" will be written in white. I thought it was backlit, but is it the whole entire word or letters of "bank" that's going to be white?
This is Jack, the sign fabricator. The sign is a push-through sign, so the letters will light up the bank, the dispensary, and the icon above will have the, where the light illuminates through those letters on the sides, um, because it's a push-through through the can.
Correctly. In other words, it's just a shot, it's almost like a shadow outline?
Correct, of just those letters.
Okay. And, um, right. And I apologize, I didn't have a chance to go out there, but in some of the photographs, it shows that you have, uh, I'm sorry, Glenn, there seems to be window signage. That is not part of what we're reviewing today. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's correct. The window signage is not part of, of the sign program, and as you know, the project is under construction, so they have shaded the windows so that construction can commence on the interior without, um, you know, view from the exterior.
Okay, so a final confirmation is that if, if this program is being accepted by this commission, and three tenants move in and they need their names, as long as they are within the 8 feet by 7 inches high, they will not have to come back to AAC or Planning Commission. Is that correct?
Uh, any sign permit that would come in would be done administratively at the staff level, uh, once the Planning Commission approves the overall sign program, which guides us when signs come in.
Okay, and within that sign, uh, say tenant, they could still have their own smaller logo and be part of the name of the company with the smaller sign.
That was discussed at the AAC, and was my understanding that, that the tenant sign would all be uniform, that, um, they couldn't use a specific logo or font type. They would have to use this, um, this type of letters.
Okay, thank you very much. Questions of staff? Are there other questions of staff? Um, if not, I have a couple. Glenn, uh, can you tell me if it's typical that we allow, do we typically allow exterior signage for second-story tenants, um, in this fashion?
Uh, there, the, the Planning Commission has looked at multiple sign programs that have second and third-floor tenants. One would be the 500 Building on the corner of Ramon, Indian, and Palm Canyon. There's multiple levels, and they have a sign program, they have a monument sign with multiple tenants listed. The Planning Commission just reviewed a sign program for Building A downtown with multiple tenants on upper floors, so yes, it's been, um, it's, it's a practice that the Planning Commission has done in the previous times.
And mainly with the construction of the Block B building, we've monument signs more than we have done exterior signage. Is that correct?
Uh, that's, you could say that. Um, they're not asking for a monument sign, so this is a way to have, uh, uniform, neat signs on the side of the building itself, instead of a, a freestanding sign on Palm Canyon.
Who are the tenants going to be? What's the square footage as we...
That would be a question, a question of the applicant. Julie, do you want to answer?
Sure. We, uh, have, at this present time, and for probably the next year, we will, probably will not have any tenants. Uh, we're still remodeling the upstairs.
Who are you intending to attract as tenants? Looking at retail tenants?
You know, um, uh, it could be retail, yes, it could be definitely retail. Um, it, it just depends, um, who wants to be, um, included into the kind of business that we, we handle. Let me just also remind you, we took this building that was vacant for 23 years and spent $1.3 million fixing it. So, we don't do anything, and if you've looked at some of the magazines, it's very upscaled inside, very beautiful. We are restoring the fountain, and we will be putting plant material on a building that was closed for 23 years. So, um, the signage on the side for the tenants, uh, my understanding, as Glenn told you, would be any design that you want, but we'll keep it the same on all three. At this present time, we're not going to be putting anyone up there.
And is there a reason you asked for this kind of signage instead of a monument sign?
There's no place for a monument sign.
Thank you. Um, there being no more questions of staff, the issue is before the commission. Comments? Commissioner Song and Commissioner Hirschbein. Uh, Commissioner Irvin, did you add your hand up?
Yeah, I just kind of wanted to follow up. I believe you asked about the square footage, um, of the tenants, and I don't think I heard the answer for that, so I was just wondering if the applicant could speak about the square footage for the tenants.
You know, they're pretty big, we haven't measured them out 100% yet, because they're all big buildings, I mean, big, big suites, so they can be divided up or, or, you know, added. It's either way, whatever somebody's looking for, we really don't even know that right now.
Square footage of the second floor?
Right, correct.
Can you just tell me the total square footage of the second floor?
No, I can't. I don't have it with me.
Can you tell me the total square footage of the first floor?
Um, Jack, do we have any measurements on that? I don't, I wasn't prepared for that. I'm sorry.
So, the building itself is, Jack, if I could say, the building itself is 18,000 square feet, and, um, it is a balcony that wraps around, is that correct, Julie? So, the upper floor is about half the size of the first floor?
Correct.
So, likely 6,000 square feet.
Most likely larger than 6,000, so around 9,000 square feet for the upper, upper level.
Yes.
Are there any other questions of the applicant before? Commissioner Marutti, and then Commissioner Loewen.
Just a technical question for the sign expert. Why are you using low-voltage LED modules instead of neon?
Uh, one, it's cost, and two, it's, we, neon's very expensive these days. We don't do anything with neon. We only fabricate with LED, mainly lasting and, and, uh, and, uh, cost.
In the appearance, is there a difference?
Uh, not anymore, no. I mean, the only difference would be if it lit up during the day. LED, you can't see lit up during the day, but as far as, uh, evening illumination, it's the same.
So, are they considered rear-lit channel letters?
They're considered halo lit, correct, yeah. They're a push-through sign.
Okay. I'm a big fan of neon, but I guess that's not...
Neon's, uh, going away.
All right, thanks.
Uh-huh.
Commissioner Loewen?
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I was a little, I was unsure, is there one sign for Palm Canyon and one for the cross-street, I think is Baristo, or is it two, two signs for Baristo?
It's one sign on the corner facing Baristo, and then it's the other side, the main one is on, uh, Palm Canyon.
So, the sign program is for two signs, one on Palm Canyon and one on Baristo?
With the tenant signs underneath, correct.
Okay, because I think the, the display that was shown to us quickly in the staff report had two signs on Baristo, correct?
No, it has one small sign, circular sign above, and then the three tenant signs underneath it, and then the main sign is on the opposite pillar closer to the Village Pub, uh, as far as the main sign that will be on Palm Canyon.
All right, that's, that's my question. Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you.
And, oh, the questioning being done, the item is before the commission. Uh, just generally comments, if people have comments. Commissioner Loewen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think this is, this kind of building, this old bank, which I remember when it was first Interstate Bank back in the 80s, um, in order to preserve these buildings and make use of them, we have to recognize that what was built 30, 40 years ago is different today. And large banks with a single sign just are not going to be moving into our downtown district. So, I'm supportive of going in this direction, recognizing that there will be an anchor tenant, and that there will be some signage for other tenants. I think that the design is attractive. I, I would like to see it be limited, the font to be limited to a uniform size, no logos for the three tenants. And, as it just happens, not only did I grow up on Palm Canyon, do I remember that bank, we are, my current office is in the 500 Building, which is an old, large building with three floors. There's a sign program there. It's very important for us on the second and third floor to have signage, um, and we'll be moving into the other building on the third floor. So, I know that we've inherited a legacy of not allowing these kinds of things, but I think that the change in our economy and the times requires that we be flexible and allow things like this, and I'm interested in everyone else's comments as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Other comments? Commissioner Hirschbein?
Uh, yeah, I was part of AAC when we approved the 500 Building signage program, so I'm happy, Commissioner Loewen, that you're happy with that. However, we, they specifically asked for tenant signage affixed to the building on the second and third floors, and we understood the need to provide identity to tenants on the second and third floors, but we recommended, and they accepted, a monument sign. That's what you see out there now. You see a sign that's about, I don't know, maybe it's six feet high, I can't remember, eight feet high, with a series of tenant names on it that identifies who's on those upper floors. And, when you begin affixing a series of tenants to a building like this, it tends to degrade the architecture of the building, and this building does have a very characteristic architecture to it. And, also what troubles me is you could rent a, a very small space and wind up with a very big sign, and it just becomes a billboard at that point. And, uh, I, I think that, um, identifying a tenant, there is room for a monument sign, by the way, uh, on Palm Canyon, uh, possibly on Baristo as well, but definitely on Palm Canyon, because the building is set back, uh, a significant amount of distance from the public right-of-way there, and I, I'd be happy to see a monument sign. I think attaching the sign to the building itself, a series of signs to the building itself, is, uh, is problematic for me. And, and, and I, I just want to comment on the discussion that Commissioner Song had with staff about what's allowed under code, and the discussion had to do with the height of the letter, and I, I'm not pivoting about one inch high above what's on the code, but, but code does not recognize, uh, the, the need for, um, signage for upper-story tenants affixed to the side of the building, uh, and I think for good reason. And, uh, I, I think having a monument sign, a tasteful monument sign, in the same vocabulary of the architecture of the building, uh, would provide the identity they need without compromising the building itself. So, I would support a monument sign, um, but I, I wouldn't, I would not support this, these three additional signs affixed to the building.
Your comment?
So, may I make a comment to that, please?
No.
Okay.
The matter is before the commission. Commissioner Irvin?
Um, if I'm not, not mistaken, um, didn't at the last meeting, we have, um, signage, same situation with another project?
Let me see if I can answer that. The answer is yes, we did. It was the, uh, block, or it was the A Building, the West Elm Building, uh, and we did allow that in part because of the size of the tenant, um, and it was, I thought it was one-off to approve it. It's the first time I've seen that approved. Uh, Commissioner Hirschbein?
Yeah, I'd just like to respond to that question. Um, number one, there is an exterior entrance to that upper-level tenant, it's in the back of the building, but there is an exterior entrance to that upper-level tenant, so it takes it out of that category. And also, there was one tenant name approved in that sign program, because when they're asking for three times that amount of tenant names.
So, so with saying that, um, I just kind of want to be fair to all applicants and not seem to be a little bit partial to different applicants, and kind of keep a same uniformed approach. So, could we offer, I mean, could we propose, uh, something similar to what was proposed for that building, for this building, and see if the applicant would approve or would agree for that signage, instead of having three?
Well, what was approved for the other building was a tenant on the third floor that had a direct exterior entrance on the first floor. There was a door you went into, and then you went into an elevator lobby and went up to that, that, uh, tenant. In this case, you have to walk, and it, it's, it's a, it's a different, uh, process to get into the bill, into the tenant space, and there's three times as many signs... And there's three times as many signs in a much smaller building. And, and, and if you look at precedent, again, if you look at the five hundred building, uh, we didn't allow it on that building and so now we're going to allow it on this building, that's not fair to the five hundred building either.
Yeah, that, that was going to be the follow-up. I was going to ask Paul about the, uh, five hundred building and see if they had a sign there on their second or third floor or any kind of signage on that as well. So, Paul, they don't have any on the, uh, second or the third floor?
No, Commissioner Hirschbein described it completely accurately. There are two monument signs that list tenants for the five hundred building. Uh, the five hundred building is a large, three-story multi-tenant building. So, it's different from the bank that we're looking at now. I think, you know, there's a good point here. The, the fundamental question is, should it be a monument sign or should it be affixed to the wall? I don't think there's any doubt that a, a retail or a building of this size will require additional signage. The idea that only one tenant will occupy this bank is not realistic in the current economy. So, the question is, how do we regulate and identify those other smaller tenants? And I'm open to hearing, and you're absolutely right about precedent on the five hundred building and also right on the two oh one North Palm Canyon. We are a single tenant occupying all eighteen thousand square feet with no, no way to find us without that sign.
Okay. So, I, I just would kind of like to hear what the other commissioners feel. And, um, thank you guys for answering those questions.
Other comments? Commissioner Song?
Um, yeah, very, very good comments have been made. Uh, the, the balance for me is, uh, Palm Canyon is not the issue, it's Baristo. And, um, I think that, uh, the top tenant line deserves the future tenant, uh, name, but I only see one, not three. And, um, it has a way of, for me, balancing with the, uh, with the round signage and then allowing a second main tenant, um, to be featured. But every other tenant could be part of a, uh, monument signage.
Any other comments? Commiss, Commissioner Maruzzi?
I, I'd like actually to hear from the tenant, uh, the applicant as to why they believe that, uh, a monument sign would not work or isn't, uh, I'm not understanding that. It seems like there's an issue that, that it can be.
Well, bring, we don't know what we have for a motion. Usually, I would bring, ask, we didn't have a public hearing, but after this, after we get to the point of a motion, I would ask them to come forward.
Okay. That, I, you know, it's funny, I, I didn't think this was going to be a controversial issue. I just assumed that this was perfectly fine when I looked it over. But I wasn't familiar with the precedent, precedents, uh, and there have been good comments made by my colleagues. So, I'm kind of stuck here. I don't, I don't know which way to go. I mean, in general, I don't have problems with signage. I like signage. And, uh, if the, if the applicant or the tenant wants it, I generally would approve it if it's, if it's aesthetically acceptable and the AAC seem to find it so. And I tend to, uh, appreciate their, their thoughts. So, I'm still not convinced one way or the other.
Commissioner Loewen?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I have not had the benefit of hearing decisions like this thought through. I was not part of the five hundred building's sign process. And I, if, Madam Chair, if possible, I would like to hear some of the reasoning as to how they came to their conclusion. Or is that not really admissible here during our discussion?
Maybe what I can do is bring the planning director in to talk, talk about that. I think Commissioner Hirschbein and I were party to that. Not sure about Commissioner Song, if she was on AAC at that point in time. I know that that was, um, a strong discussion on planning commission at the time. Uh, Flynn, did you want to comment on, on this?
And, and Madam Chair, if Flynn could also talk to the, to the question of technical feasibility?
So-
Of a monument sign?
Yeah, I think that's the piece that I would like to know about as to if it's Flynn or Flynn.
Thank you. So, the, the five hundred building actually was my project, but I, I have to admit it was a long time ago. Um, but I know that there was discussion when the bank, Rebel Bank, was in. And I think they have a sign above their, um, the bank space on the corner of Indian. So, um, you know, the, the goal of, of a sign program is to allow signage, uh, that deviates from what the sign ordinance would allow. And there are, are, the, the planning staff tries to get multi-tenant buildings to come in and get a sign program so that we can administer the signs, uh, easily and quickly at, uh, at a staff level. So, for the five hundred building, I do remember there was discussions of how do you get the top tenant's, uh, signage? Um, and from a planning standpoint, monument signs are not always the best way to do that on, um, pedestrian streets such as, um, Palm Canyon unless they're scaled correctly so that they're more pedestrian-oriented versus auto-oriented. Uh, so for the five hundred building, I, I don't know exactly what the discussion was, but, uh, we did limit the number of signs on the building itself to just, uh, the monument sign so that they would not clutter the exterior. Okay, they're, in looking at a, um, a Google Map Earth image, they are on the first floor. So, we did not allow signage on the second or third floors.
And is there, technically, is there room for a monument sign? That was the second question. Commissioner Loewen, I'll recognize you in a moment.
So, for this building, and maybe the applicant can describe it, it does sit back, uh, thirty feet from the, the curb. So, it does have that, that, uh, luxury of having space that a monument sign would not crowd, uh, the, the street frontage. But, um, when an applicant comes in with a proposed sign program, staff does the analysis based upon what the code would allow and tries to find the less deviation from the code. And the applicant did not ask for a monument sign. So, that was not in, in the offering and, and staff did not analyze a monument sign, uh, for the sign program.
Thank you. If the applicant is here, can you speak to your concerns regarding the monument sign?
Yes, hi. Uh, basically, in front of our doors, six, seven feet is a forty-eight-inch fountain.
Robert, can I get the slides up?
In front of the fountain, there is three foot to the pedestrian walkway. There are planters that are, uh, five feet, uh, from each other all the way around the building. There is no room for a monument sign and it disrupts the look of the whole building.
We have a strong echo, so we really can't hear what you're saying. I think the, uh, chambers is affecting the sound.
So, here is, uh, if you look at the screen, here is, uh, a picture of the front of the building. You'll see that the planter beds here are at the sidewalk, the public property line edge here. And then the building sits farther back.
Can you show the Baristo side?
We can't hear you, Madam Chair.
We'd like to hear the tenant again. I couldn't understand what you said.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, where the planters are, they go all along, they're like four feet away from each other all the way around the building. In front of the building is a forty-eight-inch fountain that we're restoring. And the footage between the fountain and the pedestrian walkway is only three feet, not even. So, there's really not a room for a monument sign. And I, I, I think a monument sign would take away the look of the whole building. We are, it's, it's, the look is, the, our signage, it looks like a coin. We're keeping it, you know, in the bank. We haven't changed the design of the bank. And, you know, we're, we're just looking for some simple signage. Um, the sidewall is where people look up. Our, Jack, I believe our walls are thirty-eight by forty-eight?
The height of the walls are thirty-eight feet tall and eighteen feet wide. And the maximum size of each one of these tenant signs is only eight feet and seventeen inches. So, based on the, uh, architecture committee's request was to make it solid so it wasn't so overpowering. Um, so we reduced it in size. Um, so it's actually pretty minimal when you, from the grand scale of an eighteen-foot wide wall. Um, that the, the tenant signs aren't going to be these huge, uh, they're only, you know, twelve feet, twelve square feet in, in total diameter or, or total square footage.
Thank you. Commissioner Loewen?
Um, yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. And I really appreciate that the pictures have been shown to remind us. That is one of the big differences between the five hundred building and this building is that there's so much fixed concrete objects in the, in the walkway. And I really think that makes for a compelling argument to not add additional monuments and obstacles in front of the building. Um, I think they've got a good program and a legitimate reason. And I'm, I'm open to friendly amendments. But I, I intend to move approval of, of a sign program, hopefully with a majority consensus. I'm sorry, fixed on the wall.
Commissioner Song?
Um, yeah, I, I forgot to ask this question, but for the fire department, where would the number address sign be on this building?
Julie, where's the address on the building?
Uh, the address is in the front and the back.
Is, is it above the front door?
Uh, yes, it is. Yes, it is.
Okay. Um, I, I respectfully disagree. I think actually the planters could be an opportunity to design a monument design for the tenants of the building.
Maria, can you speak to that a little more?
Sure. Uh, there are two rectangular, uh, planters that are very close to the tower. But there's one that is close to the building entrance. So, as the landscape gets designed in that planter, actually, I think it would be a good composition to have a blade with boulders or planting and lighting, um, to light up a directory signage, which is more to the scale of the eye and the vehicle.
So, Commissioner Song, the circular, uh, object here is a fountain that will be-
Right.
Okay, repurposed.
Correct, but with water con, water conservation, yeah, I, I, I understand. But with water conservation, it could become a landscape planter rather than a fountain.
Do, do you have a picture of the Baristo side of the building? Okay, so that's the tower that they're proposing signage for facing Baristo. And from what I'm seeing from that picture, there's clearly sign, uh, a space for, for a monument sign on that, uh, in that plaza area. Just to the right of that monument or in front of it.
Uh, I hear what people are saying. We have to bear in mind that the applicant didn't request a monument sign. So, the most thing in front of us is a motion to approve, and I haven't heard a second for it yet.
Madam Chair, would you like me to formally state my motion?
Yes.
Robert, we can turn that off.
I'd like to move approval, um, with staff, as staff recommends, um, with the specific condition that all tenant signs on the building be a uniform font and no logos allowed for the sub-tenants. Um, I, and I make this motion because I think we need to just decide right here now whether we're going to allow signs on this building or not. And I think it's in the interest of the community and this tenant to proceed.
Is there a second for Commissioner Loewen's motion?
And you see me?
Oh, I don't, I didn't see you. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I, I want, I am going to second the motion. But to explain my thinking, nineteen eighties buildings haven't returned into, uh, the point where people are considering them as architecture or good architecture. However, I think there's some qualities of this building that I, I like. And I think, uh, in the future, it may be something that people care about from a preservation standpoint. I would like the planters to remain planters and I'd like the fountain to remain a fountain, um, because there are so few fountains left. I'm not sure about the, the water issues. And I don't know if there's a way to mitigate that somehow, but I'd like to see a fountain there. And, uh, I don't think that a monument sign would be that helpful. I mean, if, I, I agree with the tenant, uh, the applicant that it would be more effective to have the signage on, on the, uh, on the surface of the walls. So, I'm going to support, uh, the motion as a second.
I just, uh, the problem for me is that it's too massive in terms of the sign. I could be comfortable with one tenant, but not three tenants or smaller letters. Uh, the, the letters, when you look at the rendering, they overwhelm the coin. You don't even know that the coin is a separate sign for a separate business.
Uh, Madam Chair, would, would we get your support if we limited this to the coin and two tenants?
Yes.
Is it, is it legal for me to amend my own motion to, because we're having discussion here?
Yes, as long as the seconder agrees.
So, commit, uh, if, if there's a second, I'd like to rephrase my motion to approve this sign program, but limiting it to only two tenants and the other conditions to remain the same.
Vice Chair Maruzzi, do you accept the amendment to the motion?
Haven't decided yet. It seems to me if, if this has been a difficult building to lease and there's nine thousand square feet on the second story, uh, and let's say it was evenly divided, why would, you know, three, three, three and three, why would it be appropriate that only two of them are able to, um, have, you know, their name on the building? If it was, if it was a thousand square feet on the second story, it's, I agree, it should probably just be one. But it's nine thousand square feet. So, I, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm going to stick with the original motion to make it more complicated for all of us.
Would you be willing to make the letter smaller?
Am I willing, yeah, I, I would agree if we could have all three, uh, tenants there. But, uh, yes, I would certainly agree if you wanted to make the letter smaller.
What, what size smaller?
The sixteen that's in the sign program?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, in order, because I see us all struggling and it's sometimes really hard to think out loud and collaborate like this. Um, to speak to the issue that was raised about one, two or three tenants, it's not uncommon for building owners to have to decide which tenants deserve signage and which don't. And by having two, it reduces the amount of verbiage on the wall. And it allows the, the property owner to find a couple of good tenants that are worthy of the sign. But also takes into consideration that there's not a lot of support for too many words on a building. So, I think that if, if the seconder would reconsider, it achieves everyone's objectives pretty nicely to keep the letter size the same so that people can read easily, but only allow two tenants- but only allow two tenants on the second floor and the building owner will have to decide who's worthy and who's not.
I'd like to hear what the tenant, since, or the applicant feels about this. Would, why?
We would be more than, we would, sorry. We would be more than okay with lowering them to sixteen inches.
But you'd want all three?
Preferably, yes.
Would you accept two?
Point of order, Madam Chair? Or, or if a motion is on the floor...
Motion is before the commission, it is before the commission, Commissioner Maruzzi.
So therefore we can't ask the tenant if we, or the applicant if we feel that they would agree to this?
At this point in the discussion, I can ask if the commission wants it, but it's not helpful to go back and forth this way. We can, we can ask the tenant when we've crafted a motion.
All right, then I will support the change, uh, that has been suggested by Commissioner Lewin.
Of two tenants and the letters at seventeen inches. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have discussion? There being, uh, Commissioner Lewin, if there is no discussion, we can call the court.
Can I, I do think that it will be better without more, more objects in the public right-of-way or around that building. There's just a lot going on there. And I think it will be more aesthetically pleasing to proceed its path.
Can, can, can I hear that motion again, please?
Would you like me to take that, Madam Chair?
Yes.
The motion is to approve the sign program as described by staff, but only allowing two tenants on either side of the building and requiring that the tenant signs not allow logos and have a uniform font.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Song has a comment.
Commissioner Song?
Um, yes, I, I would like clarification. I thought one was to, um, follow the size according to what the applicant has requested. The other one is to follow the size according to the downtown program, which is the capital letters of sixteen and then the remaining letters at fourteen. So can I get a clarification on that?
So it's my understanding that the, the letters would be seventeen inches, um, every letter would be seventeen inches.
Uh, is there any more discussion or should we, can we call the question? Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, uh, Commissioner Lewin?
Yes.
Vice Chair Maruzzi?
Yes.
Commissioner Urban?
Yes.
Commissioner Hirschbein?
No.
Commissioner Song?
No.
And Chair Wermuth?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
That's a yes.
Yes. Thank you.
The motion passes. Okay, moving right along to the next item is a public hearing. It's a request by the City of Palm Springs for approval of the annual update of the Palm Springs zoning code. Uh, in that there is not, and the city is the applicant for this public hearing. It will just be members of the public speaking. Uh, can we have a staff?
What happened?
Sorry, we had a little bit of interference. Uh, Mr. Newell has handled it. Uh, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission, as you are aware, we do an annual update to the city's zoning code. It's an opportunity for us to make corrections where there are errors in the code, clarify issues where it's unclear, to bring the code into conformance with updated state regulations and to address issues or concerns that are brought forward to us by the city council. For this year's update to the zoning code, one of the areas that we are in the process of correcting is relative to animal-related uses. Uh, as you may be aware, over the last several years, we've had discussions about animal daycare. Um, one of the things that we never did, however, was to actually add a definition for animal daycare. So we are adding that now. Uh, we are also expanding it in terms of the zones where it would be permitted. Historically, animal daycare has been allowed in the Central Business District upon approval of a land use permit, but has required a conditional use permit in industrial zones. What we're proposing to do is allow it by land use permit in the CBD, Central Business District, C-one and C-two zones. And then in the highway, commercial, office, and industrial zones, it would be a permitted use. Relative to animal hospitals, we've had questions recently in terms of districts where those may be permitted. It's come to our attention right now, we only allow them in the M-one and M-one P zones uh, to give a greater ability for access to those types of uses. We're proposing that animal hospitals be allowed in the office and industrial zones as a permitted use. It should be noted that animal hospitals are allowed to have kennels as an accessory use, but as an accessory use, it's limited in terms of the amount of kennels they can have. And then finally, in terms of kennels, uh, like animal hospitals, we've only allowed those in the M-one and M-one P zones. We're proposing that they still continue to be a conditional use permit, but expanding them into the CM, which is Commercial Industrial, and the M-two, which is our Heavy Industrial Zones. And so those are the minor changes that we're proposing relative to animal-related uses. Uh, another area that we would like to correct is relative to temporary structures. It's kind of unique. Uh, in the zoning code right now, the temporary structures are allowed in residential, sorry, residential zones by a land use permit for up to eighteen months. However, in order to have temporary structures in commercial zones, it actually requires a conditional use permit. Uh, so it seems a little imbalanced there that we wouldn't allow them uh, via the same process as in residential zones. Uh, it, another issue is the definition of a temporary structure only allows them for ninety days. We have, again, conflicting regulations in the zoning code, specifically in our residential zone, which allows them for eighteen months. What we're proposing to do is to revise the definition to be consistent with the language that we have in the residential zone and to also allow these in commercial zones by a land use permit. In terms of temporary structures, let me give you just a little bit more explanation in terms of what they are. In our residential zones, the only temporary structures that are allowed are sales trailers. In our commercial zones, they would be uses that would be permitted in the zone, uh, but housed in a temporary structure. For example, most recently, the BMW dealership on East Palm Canyon uh, secured permits to do renovations to their building, including renovations to the interior. They needed to have office space on site since they were renovating the office space. And so we had to go through the process of, uh, issuing a land use permit for their temporary office space. Uh, this does not cover construction trailers, which is handled under building permits, nor would it allow an extended time period for a use in a district where the use is not permitted. Um, so, for example, if someone wanted to do a drive-through restaurant, they wouldn't be able to do it under a temporary, uh, as a temporary structure. Um, so I just wanted to make clear that this doesn't open the gates for temporary structures, uh, but rather allows us to continue the program that we've been doing in residential districts and, uh, allowing that in commercial districts via a land use permit. Uh, another issue that we've been asked to address, uh, in this case by members of the city council is relative to uses in the P Professional Zone. And in particular, the Professional Zone allows offices as the primary or principal use in that zone district. However, it does allow for accessory uses as may be appropriate. And in this case, it allows for restaurants, banks, and fitness facilities upon approval of a conditional use permit. Uh, because we are seeing changes in office uses and the amount of office square footage that's needed, we've had requests through the city council to revise that process and revise the zoning code. Uh, what we're proposing to address that concern is to allow restaurants, banks, and fitness facilities via a land use permit where they continue to be an accessory use. Uh, the key issue here is it prevents, uh, many applicants from even attempting to establish a restaurant in the P Professional Zone just because of the cost of the permit. In terms of where this exists, let me give you a little bit of background. We have four primary areas where we see the P Professional Zone, starting at the top of the map at the intersection of Vista Chino and Sunrise, uh, to the east of that intersection. On the north side of the street, there's a number of parcels there that have the P Professional Zone designation. Uh, continuing down just to the left around Desert Regional Hospital, uh, there's a small handful of properties that are office use and P Professional Zone there. The third area is in the area of East Takwitz and Farrell. Uh, you have office uses along Takwitz, uh, with residential uses, multifamily residential uses interspersed. And then on Farrell, just south of Takwitz, uh, there is some P Professional Zone property there in that area as well. And then the final area is on East Ramone. Uh, at the south end of the airport, there are parcels along Ramone that also have that designation. And so these are the areas where that would take effect. Again, permitting restaurants, banks, fitness facilities in the P Professional Zone by a land use permit instead of a conditional use permit. The next area for correction is relative to residential density, and this is to address changes in state law. As many of you are aware, there have been recent changes in state law to facilitate the development of housing. As we look at those changes in state law, we need to make accompanying changes in our zoning code to make sure that we are consistent with state law. We have in our multifamily zoning districts square footage requirements for multifamily residences in the R-two, R-three, and R-four zones. Uh, I believe this requirement was added as a means to, uh, implement the general plan. Um, and what it requires, basically in the R-two zone, you have to have a minimum of three thousand square feet per unit. In the R-three zone, you need to have a minimum of two thousand square feet per unit, et cetera. Uh, the issue is that this square footage limitation in our zoning code is not always consistent with what the general plan allows. And so what we're proposing is language in the zoning code that would defer to the general plan in terms of density. Uh, so that way we don't have to try and moderate between, between two different requirements in the general plan and the zoning code. And, uh, more importantly, that we are consistent in the administration of zoning relative to the general plan. Just to give you an example, uh, this was one that came up a couple of years ago with an R-two parcel that we have on the north end of town. Uh, the zoning would allow, uh, a maximum of three units on the site based on the zoning language that requires a minimum of three thousand square feet per unit. However, under the general plan, it would allow four units based on the square footage of the site. Another example where this becomes much more apparent, in the R-three zone, there's a vacant, uh, developed five-acre parcel. Uh, under the R-three zoning at two thousand square feet per unit, it would allow a maximum of a hundred and nine units. However, under the general plan designation, it would allow a hundred and fifty units. So at the smaller scale, it's minimal, but at the larger scale, it becomes quite a difference. So again, we are proposing this change to be consistent with state law and to facilitate the development of housing. Another way that we are attempting to do that is by making a change in the language of the resort corridor overlay. Currently, in the resort corridor overlay, it favors the development of hotels and requires a conditional use permit for residential uses in that overlay zone. With other changes we are proposing in looking at implementing an updated housing element, what we're proposing is to eliminate the conditional use permit requirement and to allow housing, uh, as permitted in the overlay district per the underlying zone district. Just to give you an idea of where the resort overlay zone is, it primarily follows Palm Canyon, uh, as it goes throughout the city. So starting on the north end of town at the intersection of Tramway Road and proceeding down North Palm Canyon, uh, then along through the central portion of the city and then continuing out along East Palm Canyon. There's also a segment along Takwitz Canyon Way, which is now encompassed by the Section fourteen specific plan that is also designated as part of the resort overlay. So within these areas, we would propose to remove a conditional use permit in order to develop housing and allow it where the underlying zone would permit. So for example, where areas are Zone C-one, uh, multifamily housing is a permitted use, so it wouldn't require a conditional use permit, even though it's also within the boundaries of the resort overlay. Uh, as I had spoken relative to the updated housing element, uh, our steering committee and our consultant is currently working on updates to the housing element. Under, uh, the state guidance that we are given, under the next cycle for development of housing, we will be required to identify the development of twenty-five-hundred new housing units. And so it's critical that we remove barriers to the development of housing so that we can hopefully achieve the goal and the requirements that's set forth by the state. Another area that we are proposing for change is relative to swimming pool setbacks. Some of the planning commissioners may remember that with a number of the multifamily and single-family projects that we've, uh, approved over the last several years, we've approved a reduction in the setbacks for swimming pools. What we're proposing to do is to allow a three-foot setback from the side and rear property lines, uh, but we would still require a minimum five-foot setback from a front property line. Also, one of the things that we need to clarify in the zoning regulations is that swimming pools cannot be built in public utility easements. Because we do have utility lines typically at the rear of residential properties, uh, and sometimes along the side property lines, wherever there is a public utility easement, a swimming pool cannot be built within that area. Uh, so that is one of the changes that we're proposing consistent with the actions taken by the Planning Commission over the last couple of years. Another update that we are proposing is relative to parking. In our parking code, we have for some time allowed a waiver for the provision of additional parking for Class One historic buildings where there is a change of use that would require additional parking spaces. This requirement or this exception was adopted in order to assist with the preservation of historic properties. In twenty-eighteen, we made some significant changes to the Historic Preservation Ordinance and we essentially elevated Class Two historic resources in terms of being on par relative to the protections of Class One historic resources. Uh, and so we thought it would be appropriate to also allow that same parking waiver for Class Two buildings as we currently allow for Class One buildings. Uh, to give you an example, most recently, the Racket Club property on the north end of town received a Class Two historic designation from the city council. So that would be applicable there. We have a commercial building on Palm Canyon and Andreas Road, the Carnell Building, which is a Class Two building, so it would also apply there. And what you will probably see in the future is that we have additional buildings that are designated Class Two. And again, in order to encourage preservation, this parking exception assists with that goal. Some of the proposed updates have come to us from the city attorney's office. Uh, there's one under temporary signages, which I don't have as part of this presentation, uh, which essentially clarifies that signed twirlers are not permitted in the city right-of-way um, for safety and right-of-way issues. One of the other things that is being proposed by the city attorney's office is to allow or to identify in the code that combined public hearing notices are permitted. Uh, currently, our code does not address this, however, charter cities are allowed... Currently, our code does not address this, however charter cities are allowed to combine notices under state law. And so what we're proposing is to allow for a combined notice. This would be whenever we have a combined planning commission and city council hearing where the planning commission meets, takes action, and then the city council meets directly afterward. Or in some cases, on the annual calendar, the planning commission meeting for an item will occur a week in advance of the city council meeting. To avoid confusion, it's helpful to be able to do a combined notice in those instances when the two hearings are held close together. And so for that reason, we are proposing to add that language under our public notice section. That concludes my presentation to you. There are a number of minor corrections and other changes that I didn't discuss in my presentation. If you have questions about those or anything that I've identified here, I'd be more than happy to take your questions at this point.
And maybe if we can go through the topics one by one so that we can focus the questions on the same topics. Do people have questions of the items that are in this, on any of them? Commissioner Lewin?
Yes, Madam Chair, and I think you're asking us just to identify the places we would want to have questions, not ask the question. Okay. So there's only two areas that I would like to have a little more information. One is really to discuss the consideration of changing the resort corridor overlay, because I think there's just a lot of potential impacts, and I'd like to hear more about it in terms of economic impact and why that overlay didn't allow residential in the first place. It's important to understand why that was requiring a CUP before we remove it. And then the only other one that I had a strong question about was the implications of changing, it's the fourth bullet point, of having restaurants allowed with an LUP versus a conditional use permit. And what does that really mean in terms of our ability to address impacts from restaurants? Okay?
Good. Commissioner Song, you had your hand up. Are there items that you would like to discuss further?
Yes, to piggyback, Commissioner Lewin, I believe the restaurants, which I also have questions on, is in Zone P Professional, correct?
Correct.
So we'll go back to that item. Were there any other items?
Not for me.
Commissioner Hirschbein?
Yeah, just one. There was a proposal to reduce the cost, and I believe it related to CUP and LUP. And I was, I thought that the cost of permits had to relate specifically to how much it cost the city to process the permit. And I'd like just a short explanation of that. In other words, now we're charging $8,000 plus, and it was going to go to $1,500 plus. Is the cost to staff 8,000 or is it 1,500?
Okay. And any other questions that people have? I had two. I had, I wanted to ask a little bit about temporary and how you terminate the 18 months or if you can give the permit for less time. And I'm thinking of the Mirror House in Desert X. I'm assuming that's something that would have fit, that permit, and how you handle the time issue. And I actually wanted a better definition of animal daycare, and I'm wondering in which of the three categories you put outdoor space in terms of requirement for, is it with the boarding? Is it with the daycare? It clearly doesn't seem like it has to be the hospital.
Okay.
So just a question about that issue in terms of animal welfare.
Okay, absolutely. So, Madam Chair, I've written down the questions. Let me go through them in order if that's appropriate.
One more question from Commissioner Song. Yes? Commissioner Song?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I really didn't ask my question. For Zone P, I know we were looking at restaurants and workout places or fitness centers. Was there a discussion of what other possible uses to be more flexible with professional spaces were considered, but they were taken out because it's not allotted within this type of amendment?
Okay. So Flynn, if you want to go through the questions?
Certainly, let me go ahead and do that. And let's start first with the question from Commissioner Lewin about the resort overlay. In terms of the history of the resort overlay, what I can tell from our zoning code is the adoption of the resort overlay occurred approximately 1978 or sometime close thereafter. The intent of the resort overlay was to encourage the development of hotel properties within that zone. Recognizing that Palm Springs is a resort city, it was important that we give a priority to hotels within that overlay zone at that time. One of the things I would say is that as we are currently going through the process of updating the general plan, looking at our goals, policies, and objectives, I think we could agree that we have achieved the goal of being a resort town and providing terrific facilities for our visitors in our variety of hotel properties. So I would say the goals and objectives of the resort overlay have really come to be, and currently, we are in a good place relative to that. However, things change in our community, that while we may have an adequate supply of hotel units, housing is going to be one of the key issues that we need to address. And I think one of the things that we don't want to do is we don't want to say that hotels are unimportant, so I don't want to do away with the overlay. Still, there is a need to maintain and support our hotel facilities and in the appropriate places, and the resort overlay is the appropriate place. But at the same time, we need to be able to accommodate housing in areas where we previously haven't seen it because we are running out of available supplies of land to do so. And so we're having to be more creative, and so looking more towards mixed-use development, housing in commercial areas where we can appropriately integrate that, et cetera. And so that's really the reason behind the change to the resort overlay. I want to clarify one thing. It's not that housing wasn't permitted in the past, it just required a conditional use permit, had to go through a public hearing process. As we look at the changes to state law, we are trying to remove barriers such as additional public hearings and things like that. And so that's the change that we're proposing, is that it would be permitted, has been permitted in the past, but we're just removing the requirement for the conditional use permit. Does that address your question?
Yes, it addresses my question. I'll direct comments later to the commissioners.
Moving on to the next question raised by both Commissioner Lewin and also Commissioner Song, and then getting to the issue of cost by Commissioner Hirschbein. Let me start first with the issue of are restaurants appropriate in the P professional zone? As the zoning code currently exists, it does allow restaurants and associated with that banks and fitness facilities as an accessory use in the professional zone. What the intent of that was is that office is the primary use. So if you have an office complex that's 20,000 square feet, you could allow accessory uses as long as office uses still dominate. So, you know, 50% or better of the square footage in the complex is still office. That was the intent. And so we're trying to make just a very simple change. This isn't a significant policy change. We typically avoid those as part of the annual update. So all we're doing is just changing the requirement from a conditional use permit, which requires a public hearing. The cost of the application is much more than a land use permit. A land use permit is approved at a staff level. However, it does give us the opportunity to assess impacts, look at issues such as parking, because typically restaurants require additional parking spaces, look at circulation, trash collection, things like that that come along with restaurants or other types of uses. And so the difference is it's less cost to the applicant or property owner, but still gives us a level of review and the ability to issue conditions of approval relative to that. Commissioner Song asked, should there be other uses that should also be permitted in P professional zones? As you look at the list of permitted uses in the P professional district, it is rather limited. It does not allow retail uses, for example. So there are other commercial uses that perhaps may be appropriate, but the question becomes, do they then change the focus of that zone from something other than office to something that becomes more of a typical commercial district? That may be a larger policy question, and again, what we're trying to do is just a rather simple change that would assist a number of property owners who are looking to lease vacant tenant space that they've lost recently as the office market has declined. So again, that's why we've limited the scope of that. And then finally, going on to the cost that Commissioner Hirschbein asked about, we aren't proposing to change any of our fees, we're proposing to change the application type, and associated with that is a lesser fee for the applicant. So as I had indicated in the presentation, a conditional use permit is about $8,500 between the application fee and the public notice that's required as part of that. It takes additional staff time in order to do the staff report, the noticing, et cetera. And so that's why that type of application has a higher fee than the land use permit, where we still conduct a review, we generate conditions of approval but not a staff report, there isn't a public hearing. And so that's why there's the difference in the cost. So hopefully, that answers the questions relative to uses in the P professional zone. And Commissioner Lewin, you have an additional question?
Thank you, Flynn, for seeing that. I'm impressed. If you could help me with this, if a restaurant were to go into a professional zone under this change, and you've got houses on the other side of this professional zone, let's say on Takwitz, how would a staff member, how would they evaluate the impact of the smell of cooking food and the other things that happen with a restaurant, which are quite different from the current professional district guidelines and very different from a bank or an exercise facility? In other words, odors, alcohol consumption, things like that? There's no public process on that, correct?
Yeah, you're correct. There is no public process on that. In terms of staff review, what we look for as any typical restaurant space or any commercial space converts to a restaurant space, not only do we look at the use, impacts to adjacent uses, and you bring up a good point in terms of Takwitz, there is residential behind some of the professional zones there on Takwitz. So we look at hours of operation, we look at where the trash facilities are located in terms of, you know, cans and bottles being dumped into dumpsters, that's often one of the common concerns that we have or impacts. We look at grease traps, we look at the facilities for the grill and the ventilation that's associated with that. So that is something that staff does look at in terms of the land use permit process in addition to other things such as parking and things like that. But hours of operation are typically something that we limit through a land use permit and are able to condition other aspects of the business that way.
Thank you, Flynn.
If there are no additional questions on that item, let me move on to the discussion about temporary structures. So with temporary structures, what we do is we issue a land use permit. As I've already mentioned, we have conditions of approval with the land use permit, including time limitations on how long the use can be there in place. So while 18 months is the maximum, it doesn't prevent us from issuing the land use permit for a shorter period of time. So for example, with the temporary office space at the BMW dealership, we limited the permit to, I believe, 12 months in that situation because that more or less coincided with the timing on the construction. Perhaps a rather unfortunate example, but you brought it up, Chair Wermuth, was the Desert X Mirror House that we allowed in Desert Palisades by a land use permit. For that one, the land use permit was tied specifically to the Desert X time period. So the land use permit was only for a period of, I believe, two months was the extent of the exhibit that year. And so in terms of the timeframe, we're able to do any period that is less than 18 months. At the completion of that time period, the land use permit has expired, and we typically have language in the conditions of approval that the temporary structure has to be removed from site within 30 days, and then the site restored to its original condition. So that is the typical requirement that we have. In instances where someone may want to go beyond the 18 months, we typically don't see that. But if we were to see that, what we would do is they would have to basically go through the process and reapply again, pay the fee again, and go through that. But again, it defeats really the purpose of a temporary structure. If it's going for 18 months, what it really needs to do is to go through a site plan review process and be permitted as a permanent structure. Any other questions on temporary structures? Okay. Let's move on next to the question about animal daycare and where would it be appropriate to address necessary outdoor space? I would say that the most important part of outdoor space would be relative to kennels. If we were to adopt minimum standards, I would suggest that it be adopted there. The reason I say that is typically for a kennel use, you will see longer stays for the animals than you would, for example, at the animal hospital, which is intended to be for a very short period as they are doing checkups or operations on animals, et cetera. Same thing with animal daycare in terms of the definition, it's intended to be for less than 24 hours. However, you may feel that outdoor space is important as part of animal daycare, but I'd say it would really be critical as part of a kennel. So that's where I would place it if I were to do that. Any questions about that item?
Is it included in our definition of kennel?
I don't believe that it is currently, but what we would do is for a kennel, as it comes through the conditional use process, we can include that as a condition of approval to have a minimum square footage of outdoor space per animal. So that's one way we could do it. What I might recommend, if you want some additional study and thought on this, we might do this as a separate zone text amendment at a later point in time.
I think it would make sense to do it as a separate zone text amendment. I do remember that we turned down one project in the downtown, wanted kennels but didn't have any outdoor space. And I do, you know, a couple of years ago, I think it's important to figure out a way to incorporate that, and I think there are standards that go with kennels in terms of outdoor space. It doesn't need to be huge, but dogs, probably cats, cats and birds less, require some outdoor space.
Okay. We can look at that as something to do as a separate zone text amendment. Unless I missed something, I think those were all the questions, unless there's additional questions you might have.
I have one that is a question where I, I'm afraid that I'm not as versed in what Class 1 and Class 2 are in terms of historical. And what, I love the parking waiver idea. I was just wondering what the definition of Class 2 is. Is that a property that's partially historic?
I'll go ahead and, sorry, let me, let you finish. I'll be quiet, Commissioner, Chair.
No, just, it would be helpful to me to know exactly what we're No, just, it would be helpful to me to know exactly what we're approving since we're giving parking waivers. And are we requiring with this the original parking requirement for any use that comes in? Is that what, what we're doing?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that last part? You faded out for there, for just a second.
If we're doing a parking waiver, are, and I'm sorry, I'm echoing for you. Are we requiring original parking requirements? Is, say you have a hotel that's historic and it's going to add rooms, are we not adding additional parking? Or if we have a shop in a building that's historic, are we waiving all parking requirements or just additional parking requirements for a new use?
The way that the code is written is just for the increase in use. We're not waiving all of the parking requirements, but just for the increase. Going back to your original question, the difference between Class One historic resources and Class Two historic resources. Class One historic resources meet both of the tests, if you will, in our ordinance. One is the seven criteria that we have for establishment of historic designation, which includes association with a person, events, having distinctive architectural characteristics or being the work of a master architect or builder, et cetera. So that's test one. And then the second test for Class One historic structures is, does it still retain its integrity? And so a Class One historic structure will meet both of those tests. The difference between a Class Two is it will still qualify for designation under the criteria that we've established, but it may not retain the integrity of a Class One historic structure, meaning that there's been some alteration to it, but it's not in the state as a Class One historic structure would be. And so that is the difference between the two. And that came about with some additional discussion and language in our code in the twenty-eight, twenty-eighteen update to the Historic Preservation Code. So that's the difference between the two.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I follow up with Flynn on that?
Yes, please.
Flynn, I know you're the expert and I'm not, but I thought Class Two, I thought a building would become Class Two just by virtue of its age at some point. Isn't there some, or is that Class Three?
That is actually our Class Three and Class Four designations. When we amended the ordinance in twenty-eighteen, we expanded the categories to include a separate category for Class Two, and then we have the other categories for, based on the age of the building.
So by that, I take it to mean that the current ordinance requires the historic site or the, just be, there's a public process to become a Class Two?
Correct. It has to be designated by the city council just as a Class One structure. Class Three and Class Four have different qualifications and haven't gone through that process of vetting by the city council for designation.
Thank you.
And how many Class Twos have been vetted by the city council?
I'm going to say off the top of my head, we roughly have about five or six at this point in time. And so it's a, it's a limited category, but again, I anticipate that we will see that continue to grow over the coming years.
And something like La Plaza, is that Class One or Class Two?
I believe that's Class One.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I was, I was wondering how you want to handle, because this process, there's a lot of things here, and I don't know if you want us to say where we have problems or how you want to proceed.
I think, I think it would be good if there are issues that you have, issues that you have problems with, to voice that. Flynn, do you anticipate, were you hoping this would be passed?
I don't have a schedule for this, so if we need to bring this back to the Planning Commission at the next meeting, that's fine.
So I think what I'd like to do is entertain the issues that people have with this. Commissioner Lewin?
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. I think that Flynn has done a very good job, and there's a lot of work that goes behind this. The, the big things, well, I think the Class Two parking waiver is a very good idea now that I know that those go through a public process, because not burdening a property with parking requirements helps preserve properties. The two things that concern me are the housing in the resort corridor overlay. My concern, Madam Chair, is that I think we should be very intentional about where we designate future home development, and this kind of says, we'll just allow houses here without us really doing the thought exercise of where do we want houses to go. So I would be, I would like to hear what other people think, but in general, my feeling is we should bring that particular item back for a real discussion. Then the other, the only other thing that is concerning me is the idea of allowing restaurants to be approved administratively in the professional zone. And it's not that I don't believe in staff's diligence, it's that I'm concerned about proximity of residential housing to the professional zone. And how do we manage impacts from restaurants that would spill over to a truly residential area? And I don't know if that means that we should allow the staff's proposal, but say not within X number of feet of residential housing or not bordering. So I'm interested in people's comments on those two topics. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Hirschbein, did you have your hand up?
Just to respond to those two items, which I really appreciate you bringing up, Commissioner Lewin, I'm not very concerned about allowing, I think maybe by right, of housing in a resort zone overlay. I think the need for housing, and it's not an incompatible use, trumps any intention to limit it in that zone. So I wouldn't be in favor of, I'd be in favor of the way it's written. As far as the restaurants in the P zone, I do kind of agree. I would like to give the public, like if I live behind a P zone and all of a sudden there was a restaurant there, I think I'd like to know about it and be able to voice my concern to us, to council, or to a planning commission in a public hearing. So I share your concern on that one.
Commissioner Song?
Yes, I'm agreement with Commissioner Hirschbein. As far as the restaurant goes, actually, I'm not in agreement, but what I am equally encouraging is that if there are cases of restaurants, like for example, I can think of a couple of smaller restaurants on the, what used, what used to be Fresh &amp; Easy Shopping Center, which is very close to residential, and would actually determine what is the distance to existing residential, to understand the scale of that and how it has been actually a plug into the neighborhood because people who go to those restaurants could actually walk and so on. So I would like to have that be more studied, more in the sense of not discouraging it, but having projects in Palm Springs that actually gives a framework and encourages that kind of flexibility in use.
Madam Chair, based on those comments, what I might recommend is perhaps we continue this item to the next Planning Commission meeting, where we can provide some additional information, staff can provide additional information on both of those issues and give that some additional study, so that way we can have a well-rounded discussion on those topics and determine what you want to recommend to the city council in terms of both of those items. So again, there isn't an imperative need to get this forward to the city council quickly, so additional discussion may be warranted. One of the things, Madam Chair, that we need to have you do, this is a public hearing item, we do need to have you open the public hearing. We don't have any members of the public who have asked to speak, but we at least need to open the public hearing and close it again.
Before they, before we do that, I just wanted to speak to the resort overlay zone. I do think it would be useful to look at the parcels and the areas with a bit more. I know that as part of the general plan update, we've had some interesting discussions with the business community that see creating housing, especially in that area, would be one way of extending the season and increasing the usage of Palm Springs as a resort area. So it, there are arguments in favor of that as well, but I think it's good to look at the, look at the areas. I know going from Tramway Road to Estacino, there are a lot of spaces where holding out to have all of that be commercial or resort may not work, and that housing would be really a benefit to that corridor. And we're starting to see it even with the couple of projects in the Design District and in the downtown recently. But I think it'd be good to look at what the opportunities are in the areas. And in terms of the restaurants, I think people need to know a little more about that. So I don't like losing the notice provision, but I live in an area that is kind of free of restaurants. And when Paul's Bar opened, everybody in my, where I live, had a huge sigh of, thank goodness, there's a place we can go to quickly, and the food is good and the drinks are good. And so it's nice to have local, you know, well-supported local restaurants. So, anyway. So I will, at this point, I will open the public hearing. Are there, Commissioner Lewin, do you have comments?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. If, if the intention is for staff to bring this back in the future, on the housing piece, I'd really like us to have a discussion of, as long as they're going to do the work and bring it back, of our shopping centers. And by that, I mean the, the large grocery centers that are, have Albertson's or Ralph's on them and miles of parking lots and are directly on transportation corridors. I'd like to see us discuss whether those are good spots to add housing units, by right.
Thank you. And some of that will dovetail with a lot of the work we're doing on the housing element. But let me open the public hearing. Are there any members of the public who have asked to speak?
Madam Chair, we have no members of the public who have requested to speak.
Then I will close the public hearing, and the matter is before the commission. Do I have a motion to continue this until our next meeting, which is February?
February twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth.
Madam Chair, can I do another point of order?
Yes.
When we continue this, will we reopen the public hearing at that second meeting?
Flynn, what is your advice on that? I don't know that...
I would certainly allow that if there are members of the public who request to speak. Tonight, we didn't have anyone, there may be individuals who would like to speak on the issues at the next meeting, so you as the chair have the ability to reopen the public hearing at that time.
And you'll let me know in advance if we've had members of the public who've asked to speak?
Yes, we will.
So can I take a motion to continue this until February twenty-fourth?
I'll move to continue this to the time specified, was it February twenty-fourth?
Yes. And Commissioner Song?
I'll take in that.
Okay, can we call the roll, please?
Yes, Commissioner Lewin?
Yes.
Commissioner Song?
Yes.
Commissioner Irvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hirschbein?
Yes.
Vice Chair Marutse?
Yes.
And Chair Wermuth?
Yes. The motion passes. We have, our next item is 5A, which is a question of the architectural review process. Does anybody need a break before we continue? Shall we take a ten-minute break? That was a affirmative, yes. Commissioner Irvin?
Yes.
Okay. Let's take a ten-minute break until seven forty. Are you ready, Flynn, or you will let us know?
Yes, we're ready. We can go ahead and begin.
I'm calling meeting, the February 10th meeting of the Planning Commission back to order. The item in front of us is 5A, discussion of a review of the architectural review process. And as I was just explaining to one of the commissioners, this is a introduction to the issue. This will be coming back to us at our next meeting and the meeting after that. Mr. Planning Director, your report, please.
Madam Chair and members of the commission, thank you for adding this item to the agenda this evening. I sent you all a brief memo and some attachments last night describing where we are with the architectural review process revisions. As you may be aware, we appointed a subcommittee, including Chair Wermuth and Commissioner Song, and also including Mr. Jakeway of the Architectural Advisory Committee, to a subcommittee to review the architectural review process and to look at proposed revisions. This assignment was given to us by the City Council. They have a couple of goals for these revisions. Number one, they want to look at reducing the overall timeframe for approval of entitlements. Many of the comments that they receive from applicants is the timeframe that it takes to get through the process, and so they'd like us to look at that. And then, secondly, they'd like us to look at reducing the number of application types that require discretionary reviews, where it may be appropriate to do so. In certain cases, we have City Council reviewing items that they don't need to review, that can be handled by either the Architectural Advisory Committee or the Planning Commission. And so we've also been asked to look at that issue. In terms of discretionary approvals, let me start talking about that first. The subcommittee looked at our current approval processes and have gone through the entire list and identified which ones require action by AAC, AAC and Planning Commission, AAC, Planning Commission, City Council, and have made some recommendations that we will be able to forward to you at next, the next meeting of the Planning Commission. Some of the things that the subcommittee is recommending is to allow the AAC to approve certain applications that currently require Planning Commission approval. Examples of that would be sign programs, such as the one you saw this evening, but also allowing AAC to approve the single-family hillside houses and also the houses on major thoroughfares, giving them final action on those types of applications, which again reduces the process time for those types of applications. Another thing that we're considering is allowing the Planning Commission to approve certain applications that currently require council approval. For example, sign districts require City Council approval, or what we call type-two conditional use permits, which includes a variety of uses. One of the most common ones that we see, our cell towers, requires Planning Commission to recommend and City Council to approve. And so as we go through the list of processes and application types, the subcommittee has reviewed those and it will be making recommendations to you. I included a spreadsheet showing some of those changes, noting the changes in red on that spreadsheet in the attachment that was sent to you last night. I won't go through all of those now. Again, this is just to introduce you to the topic. We will have a full discussion at our next Planning Commission meeting. The second part of the process is to look at revisions to how we do our meetings and the order of the meetings. As you're aware, we've talked about reversing the order of Planning Commission and AAC. We've even done a couple of test cases. For example, we had the Starbucks pad site on North Sunrise at the Albertson Shopping Center there, where we had the Planning Commission review the application first and forward it to the AAC. Another one that we did was on East Ramon for the Starbucks, again, there, and also the Raising Cane's Chicken. By doing that reverse process, it taught us a couple of things and made certain things clear to us in terms of how we might be able to improve that process. And so those test cases were helpful for us. In looking at that, the AAC has discussed the possibility of dividing the responsibilities of the Architectural Advisory Committee and Planning Commission. One of the situations we see that lengthens the process to a certain degree is when AAC and the Planning Commission do not agree or have different opinions, where the applicant is then going through a process requiring to revise and resubmit drawings, and then going back and forth. What the subcommittee has recommended, that the Planning Commission be over a site development permit, which would be a new application, where the Planning Commission would focus on issues such as the layout of the site plan, conformance to the general plan, conformance to development standards, and addressing issues such as circulation, et cetera. Architectural Advisory Committee would then be responsible for architectural review, and so they would have the approved site plan come forward to them from the Planning Commission. They wouldn't make changes to that site plan, but they would focus on the architectural details, the fenestration, landscaping materials, placement, sun control devices on buildings, colors, materials, the lighting plan, proposed locations of signage on buildings, those types of things. And so what that would do is divide the responsibilities whereby Planning Commission would approve the site plan first, and then Architectural Advisory Committee would do the architectural review based on the approvals that are given by Planning Commission. One of the other things that's recommended is before an applicant even files their applications for consideration by Planning Commission and AAC, is to go through a more thorough pre-submental conference with staff prior, so that staff would go through a checklist and analyze the schematic plans provided by the applicant, evaluate them relative to our development standards and conformance to development standards, but also to go through our architectural review criteria and make suggestions to the applicant in terms of conformance to our architectural review criteria, so that that way they have a more thorough evaluation prior to submitting. I think by having a pre-submental conference, that would also make the process smoother and easier for applicants once they get to the Planning Commission and Architectural Advisory Committee. So in working through this at the subcommittee level, we put together a graphic to show how that process might work. Step one would be the pre-submental conference with staff. Once they have a checklist from staff and have gone through that procedure, they would then formally submit their applications. Step two would be action by the Planning Commission on the site development permit. As part of that process, they may also provide comments to the AAC on the architecture that's proposed. And then, if there's any City Council action that would be required, for example, on a general plan amendment, rezone, plan development district, City Council would take action if that's necessary. If not, it would then go to the Architectural Advisory Committee for architectural review and looking at the architectural details and conformance to our criteria. So that is what has been proposed by the subcommittee at this point. I'm in the process of working on the draft ordinance revisions. The subcommittee will review those, and then, as Chair Wermuth has mentioned, what we would like to do is to have a discussion/study session with you on February the 24th to get your initial feedback on the proposed changes to the process, and then moving forward with a public hearing at your first meeting in March. Just so that you're aware, I have been given a deadline by the city manager that he would like to see the recommendations of the Planning Commission prior to the end of March. And so for that reason, we would like to give you these materials this evening to look at, so that way you can begin to think about changes to the process. And then for our next meeting, we'll go into depth in terms of the discussion and how the process might work. One of the things I'd also like to provide for you, in addition to the draft ordinances for your next meeting, is looking at a couple of different application types in terms of how they would go through the process. So for example, a single-family subdivision with 40 units, what would that look like in terms of going through the pre-submental with staff, Planning Commission, AAC? A new multifamily development, we would also do the same thing, illustrate how that would go through the process, and show how that might result in time savings for applicants. So, Madam Chair, that concludes my presentation. Again, this is just an initial discussion. There is no action on this item this evening. And with that, I'll turn that back to you, Madam Chair.
The item is before the commission. Are there any comments or things people would like Flynn to think about when he brings it back to us? Vice Chair Marutse?
Since you're going to be going forward with some examples of different types of projects that would go through the process, I would like to see an example of downtown development. Specifically, we know that the Art Pit will eventually have a project proposed for it. It's a very large site, it's in downtown, it's, you know, across from the new park, and see how that would go, keeping in mind the diversion process we just went through, and see how that all plays out. Because what I'm thinking is, some of these types of projects are far more complex than others, and to have a rigid set of rules and processes may not apply to everything.
Commissioner Hirschbaum, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I'm not necessarily in favor of switching how we're doing it now. I'm not convinced that there would be a significant time savings in doing that, number one. And number two, I'm not convinced there's actually a significant... And number two, I'm not convinced it's actually a significant problem. I will grant you that the Raising Cane Chicken was a problem, but to me, that was sort of an outlier. I don't see that happening on a regular basis. But I would be concerned if it does get implemented, the Planning Commission is only purview is the site plan. We've got to know massing, we've got to know uses within a building, we've got to know heights, setbacks, what's adjacent. Those are things that I think Planning Commission needs to really pay attention to. And to just reduce it to a site plan for us to review, I think is a huge mistake. And I think if it's going to go in that direction of us doing it first and then relinquishing everything back to AAC, we need to have a lot on our plate to review. And to Vice Chair Marutse's point especially, relative in the more complex projects that we see. As far as housing on a major thoroughfare in a hillside, I'm happy to relinquish that back to AAC. I don't see that we add much value on those two types of projects. I think we generally fall into the consent calendar, and I don't think we really bring much to the table when it comes to those kind of projects. So I'd be relinquishing that back to AAC 100%. The signage, I would still like to see signage come by Planning Commission. I don't know what a sign, was it sign zone or sign, there's something above a sign package, signage something going to planning, to council. I don't know what that is, so I would just need a little more definition on that. So those are my comments.
Madam Chair, I just want to clarify, in terms of the Planning Commission's responsibilities, the Planning Commission is still responsible for review of development standards and conformance to the general plan. So issues as setbacks, height, massing, et cetera, is part of that review. So I just want to make sure that that's clear.
So that would be part of the submittal to us, then?
Absolutely.
Okay, that helps.
And I would assume that a major architectural will still go through us, but the materials and finishes and those kinds of items would go through AAC?
Correct. You would still see the entire package, but AAC would do the architectural review.
What about a PDD? Is there any difference in this process for PDDs?
There wouldn't be any significant changes to the planned development district process because it has established its own process in Chapter 94. It still requires approval by the City Council, so we wouldn't be making changes to the planned development district process, per se.
And it still requires a planning session, I believe.
That's correct. It does require a pre-application with the Planning Commission. So again, not proposing changes to the planned development district process.
And it's not spelled out here, but in the subcommittee, we did talk about there being items where they're very complex, and they still, they go through a slightly different process. And it would be something like the LUP, where the planning director can decide that he or she is going to send it to the commission, even though they have the ability to work, you know, to work with it, so that there could be a different process, and we've discussed that for unique projects. Commissioner Irvin?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. How, what are we really, what's the overall consensus and the direction that everyone was going in, and what do they expect? And why would the change, why is there a change that's happening?
Speaking for the subcommittee, there are times where things go to AAC first, but it hasn't been approved, and so they work with something that doesn't have Planning Commission approval in terms of number of units, placement, all sorts of issues. And so they're working on architecture, but not knowing what the project is ultimately going to look like.
So couldn't we just take situations as they come and make that decision and determination as the projects come available to us?
AAC would also like this. They would rather be working on something where they know what the final product is going to be, but they're reviewing the architecture of a known project. Flynn, I think that's, and the other thing is to streamline the process, and there have been complaints about the process over the years, and it's, you know, it's difficult. I think one of the projects that we saw difficulties on was the downtown project recently.
And so with that being said, can we get more information to, you know, make a sound decision? I know you guys might have collaborated and made some pretty good decisions there in the, in the meeting that you guys were in, but can we get some of that document to show why this process would be more supportive? Is that going to be presented to us?
Yes.
Flynn, do you want to answer that?
Yeah, we will do that for our next meeting on the 24th. We'll have additional information for you to look at relative to that. Going back to your earlier question, Commissioner Irvin, about can't we just decide based on the project? One of the things that we need to be mindful of is that as a municipal government, we need to have processes that are clear to applicants, so they have a clear set of expectations in terms of what process they have to go through in order to obtain entitlements or zoning approvals. So we can't just kind of make it up on the fly, if you will. And so for that reason, we have to identify the procedures in our zoning code in terms of what are the steps in the process, what are the criteria that we look at to approve projects? So that way applicants have a set of expectations. So that's why it's important that although we want flexibility certain times, to a certain degree, we need to make sure that our processes are clearly identified and outlined in our zoning code.
Okay. And so the next question would be, has this process ever happened before? And how long have we been in the same process that we've been using currently?
So here in the city of Palm Springs, I don't believe that we have used this process where Planning Commission took action on an application first and then sent it to the Architectural Advisory Committee. However, our subcommittee did look at processes in other cities here in the valley, as well as other cities here in the state, in terms of how they manage their architectural review process and how they carry that out. And there are examples that are similar to what the subcommittee has looked at with having Planning Commission go first and architectural review to follow. So there are other examples of that, and I'll give you more information in our next meeting about that.
So this would be the first situation of this kind, where the roles have been switched here in the city of Palm Springs?
Other than the few test cases that we did, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Irvin, I worked in this framework for six years in Santa Monica, where we worked in this fashion with Planning Commission doing the entitlements first, and then it going to not an advisory board, but an architectural commission. And it worked very well. It really needs, and that's a question for Flynn, is what kind of staff enhance, and maybe think about what kind of staff enhancements or staffing you need to do the pre-reviews and get projects that are in good shape to go to either body, so that they just don't come over the counter and they meet the basic requirement. I think that first piece of it's really critical. Commissioner Marutse, and then Commissioner Lewin.
I'd like to better understand the council's overall goal, because there's several things I think we're dealing with here. One is the length of the whole process. I would, I can't think of any applicant that would say that they think the process is working fine, and, or, you know, they'd always want to have it take less time. And that's certainly understandable from their perspective. I don't know if it's necessarily the right thing for the city and, you know, what we're trying to accomplish as officials. Or is it simply to make it more efficient as relates to having AAC follow Planning Commission on certain items? But that may or may not shorten the overall process, because there will have to be some back and forth, unless AAC has final approval on design and we don't get to address it again. And I don't know how that would have worked at all for the virgin replacement. And I think the process worked very well going back and forth. So I don't know if their problem is how long the process is, or that just the order of the process. I'd like to understand what exactly the council's issues are. There may not be a problem here. I think that's what, you know, Commissioner Hirschhorn was saying. I don't know if there is a problem, other than maybe AAC should come after the Planning Commission. Solution for a problem that doesn't exist.
Well, again, City Council is directing staff to work on this issue, so because they have provided the direction, we are going forward with it.
I understand. But is it the length of the process, or is it the order of how we're doing it now?
All of the above, Vice Chair Marutse.
Commissioner Lewin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think there's a lot of good comments, and if I had a hat, I would take it off, because you guys are tackling a huge bureaucracy, public input, and a big process. So I really respect the work that you're doing, Madam Chair, and Mr. Jakeway, and staff. A couple of questions that have come up with this initial conversation for me. Would the, the AAC would become really a quasi-judicial body, so would those members be subject to all of our conflict of interest reporting and Brown Act financial disclosures to prevent them from having a financial relationship with an applicant? Is a question for us to address in the future. Also, who would then appoint the AAC? I think that it's a committee right now. Would it be appointed by the full City Council? Probably a good idea for us to consider that. Two other things that occurred to me, Madam Chair, were, have you guys thought about what if the AAC was really just a true subcommittee of the Planning Commission? Maybe just two architects that aren't appointed as commissioners, but really act as judges of aesthetics? I'm not saying this is the right goal, or right approach, I'm just asking if the thought has been considered. So it's not a formally constituted body, but it's really a couple of technical experts that are advising the Planning Commission, and therefore there's only one deliberative And two more final comments. I will really need help from staff understanding the questions Mr. Marutse brought up, you know, what is the rationale? I feel like I know them, but I really want to hear it articulated, so that we're answering it correctly. And, oh, and I lost my other comment, so I apologize for that.
Commissioner Song, you had your hand up?
Yeah, it's a very complicated situation that we're in. We simply put, for me, was that, or for the subcommittee, was there is the first threshold, which is to put a experienced, qualified staff member who reviews the application and understands the thoroughness and what is missing. So that application doesn't go to AAC or Planning Commission incomplete. That's the first part. The second part is, to any project that is in development, the most critical is the site design, the site context, the site proximity. To it is the building massing, the building location, vehicular and pedestrian circulation. So when Planning Commission does not review it at the very beginning, the AAC is limited to make comments solely on a building, that if it is facing in the wrong direction, we have to send it back and they have to redesign the building. So therefore, it's the circular pattern that we're trying to reduce. So for example, if a project in which we believe that a important downtown corridor needs to be respected with a certain setback, and the applicant brought it back with a different setback, and AAC only reviews the building but not the setback, and then brings it back, I mean, and then goes to Planning Commission, and we don't agree to that, that applicant may have gone through AAC three or four times just on the building design, and then later realized that Planning Commission does not agree where the placement of the building is. It is not a perfect situation, but that was the sequence that we were trying to create. Yes, there is a lot of weight on the AAC Commission or AAC Committee, because there will be the end cap to this whole process. But if you have noticed, City Council has not really commented on architecture in the last, I would say, five years. They defer to what AAC has to say about the architecture. So that was the simplicity of this new process that we were trying to create. And one of the bigger questions was, Flynn, do you have the staff to do this initial review? Because in major cities, where design is important, they do have this qualified sort of planner slash architect who does review and space time to the applicant. So I hope I clarify a little bit with my own passion.
The, what Maria said is what we've been talking about. In some answer to your questions, Paul, we, our recommendation is that appeals of AAC decisions come back to Planning Commission. They don't go to City Council. And I've worked with that in Santa Monica, and I think we only had, in six years, we only had two appeals. It's the way that people began to, because it's the end of the process, it's not as fraught with appeals. It also covers the situation. We've done a couple of them where we've turned down projects and council has approved them. When they approve the massing, they give the permit to do it, it would still go back to AAC, and somebody can look at the architecture. It was one of the weaknesses of what we did with Tower Market, and also what happened with turning down the virgin site, was that absolutely nobody looked at the architecture later. So those are things that could be taken care of, that. In terms of who appoints, my feeling is that we've done a really good job of appointing people to AAC, and have a better feel for architects and people who should be on AAC. So I would probably recommend, I don't know if Flynn agrees with that, but recommend that that appointment still happen through the Planning Commission. Commissioner Irvin? I mean, and that's up for discussion.
And so I would say there, too, as well, Santa Monica is a little bit of a different city than what we have here in Palm Springs. And for, I would just kind of hate for this decision to be made because of some disagreements with a project that recently went past. And I also would, would like us to think about the fact that maybe some of the denials that we had, or maybe just that the Planning Commission is doing more reviewing and not just necessarily just necessarily agreeing with the projects that are in front of us and just passing them along. So us having a difference of opinion than Council could also, could mean two different things. It could mean that we're looking at things in a different direction and making sure that everything is being reviewed and not just making a decision, just primarily going along with the motion. So I just kind of wanted to make that coming.
The, Santa Monica is a different city, but the difference was the investment in the staff that did the initial review. We haven't had that. But that, that really hits AAC more than it's hit anyplace else as projects have just gone in. And sitting in AAC for years, you'd see, you'd see good projects and then you'd see incredibly weak ones that they had to work with and work with and work with. And not putting them in until they're ready would really help. So I, so that's something that, that we've seen. I wasn't critical of us turning things down. The only piece that I was critical of was there being no review of the architecture once they were revived. Because if we turned it down and we raised a point, Council decided to go with it, there was no mechanism for anybody to do the architectural review and we didn't do any of it because we turned the project down. So Commissioner Lewin, you had your hand up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I feel like what I'm hearing from you and Commissioner Song is that this is not as much about speeding the process as it is creating very clear areas of decision-making.
Yep.
So that we're not going back and forth, there's a regular order. And I, I like the approach that you're coming up with. I, I don't know if it's the right idea, but I, I think that it's smart to have a clear understanding of where one body's role ends and the next one begins. So thank you for what you're doing and I'll consider everything.
But I, you know, this, this discussion is very good. Thank you. So what do we take, what do you want to take out of this discussion, Flynn, for your next presentation?
So, Madam Chair, I've heard a number of requests from the Commissioners in terms of information they'd like to have for your next meeting to lend to your discussion. So I've gone ahead and made notes of that. And so I'll tailor my staff report and presentation based on those questions and comments that you all have raised this evening. So thank you, I do appreciate that.
This item will be continued until a study session. Are there any, anything else that people would like to comment on before we finish this item? That said, I don't need to continue this till two weeks late from now, do I, Flynn?
No, you do not. It will be a separate advertised item on the agenda.
Okay, Planning Commission reports and requests. Commissioner Maruzzi and then Commissioner Lewin.
Yes, I'd like to find out the status of the Toba project as relates to demolition.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. I was ready for you tonight, Mr. Maruzzi. Yeah, the current status, I just spoke with one of my colleagues today on this. The city did obtain a court ordered demolition warrant for the property. They obtained that in state court. As part of the process, the city conducted an asbestos walkthrough of the property yesterday, as I understand. And it is, last I've heard, on the council agenda tomorrow night to put out a demolition contract for bit. That's the latest I've heard so far. Now, what is adding a complication to it is that the property is in bankruptcy. And so the bankruptcy court is involved. And I understand that the bankruptcy court wants to take a look at the assets, understand a little bit more what's going on here. And that may cause some delays in the process of getting the property addressed. So that's where we're at right now. It's going to be up to the bankruptcy court. We'll see what they have to say shortly. But we are moving this thing along.
Commissioner Lewin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to bring up a point that I raised earlier tonight when we were looking at the zoning code update. I don't know really the right process for introducing this topic, so I thought I'd share it here. I have an intuitive feeling that we should really be looking at our major shopping centers, these massive grocery stores with semi-used, smaller businesses. And how do we formally study how we can add a lot of dwelling units and residential housing there? Other than, do we need an economic study? Do we need the planning department to come up with something or a subcommittee to work on it? I'd really love for us to consider this as a deliberative body and make recommendations. So it's a question.
Madam Chair, if I might just briefly respond to Commissioner Lewin, that subject is also on my mind as well as we look at not only how do we address the requirements the state has put forth for additional housing units. We do have a number of shopping centers with undeveloped pad sites and with changes in the retail marketplace, probably will not be commercial square footage. And so it's a good question. It's, it's a good issue to look at. I think one of the things that we might do is perhaps when the time is appropriate, put together a subcommittee to study the issue and come back to the Planning Commission. We need to look at the issues of the zoning. We have some rather specific zoning for some of our shopping centers and so a subcommittee might help us work through that and looking at what would be more appropriate in addition to incorporating other uses such as housing that would be appropriate for underutilized sites such as our shopping centers. So keeping in mind that we have a general plan update underway, we have changes to our architectural review process, but I, I would like us to look at the issue as well. So thank you for bringing that forward.
Thank you, Flynn. And Madam Chair, I think Flynn has raised a good claim. Perhaps we should have a housing subcommittee of this, of this body work with staff to identify exactly where we should be directing new housing and how we can streamline it. I know it's part of the general plan update, but the rubber hits the road when it comes to the underlying zoning.
It's actually, Flynn, let me, I think it's a good idea. I wanted to give you an update on the general plan anyway. We're going to be deferring, we're talking about deferring some of the elements that we're updating until the pandemic is over. The one that we are not talking about, about deferring is the housing element. And one of the important issues in the housing element is identifying sites, possible sites for housing in that we have a very large requirement in terms of production. So Flynn, would it be helpful to have a subcommittee that meets on this, given that you're doing other work with your consultants?
There, there is a capacity issue for us right now in terms of staffing and being able to accommodate a number of, of projects of this magnitude. What I'd recommend, because the housing element is still in draft form, we're not quite there yet in terms of being able to bring it forward out of the General Plan Steering Committee to the Planning Commission for Review. But the idea of looking at underutilized commercial sites and how that helps us to achieve our goals might become a little bit clearer as we get closer to having a draft version of the housing element to look at. And that might provide the basis to begin subcommittee work of implementing the housing element. So if you could give us just another month or two to get that work done and then we can look at how we begin to implement it through a subcommittee of the Planning Commission.
So can we agendize that for, we need a month, so for the first meeting in March?
Let's actually look later in March. So that way we have-
Okay, our second meeting.
Yeah, so we have a chance to bring it to our General Plan Steering Committee first.
Okay. And people who are interested in this, we may possibly get in touch with me if you're interested in working on this. And just, but be in touch outside of, just let me know. And I see people's hands. Okay. So are there any other questions of staff, general questions? Flynn, what, or for the city attorney, for our attorney, what's going on with the other, the other hotel projects that are stalled?
The Andaz project?
Yes.
I just had a phone call this afternoon from the new owners of the project. We had originally been told that the bankruptcy proceedings would be concluded by the end of October 2020. That didn't happen. In the phone call this afternoon, the new owner indicated that they just barely completed the bankruptcy proceedings 10 days ago. They are in the process of having the original architect who worked on the project do as-built drawings for what has been completed to date. So that way they have a good idea moving forward in getting a new contractor in terms of what the scope of work will be to complete the project. So there is a small glimmer of hope that things are moving forward. I wish I had additional information and I wish it was moving more quickly than it is, but that's all that he could share with me today.
And the Dream Hotel or what, whichever current name it-
I, I don't have any information on the Dream Hotel. I don't know if Mr. Priest does or not. However, there is an agreement with the city relative to the development of the project that will need to come back before the City Council at some point in time. I, I just don't know exactly when that will happen.
Madam Chair, unfortunately, I don't have any more information on the Dream Hotel at that this time.
Thank you. Anything else? Planning Directors' report?
Madam Chair, I believe Commissioner Irvin had a comment.
Yeah, I also wanted to kind of echo a little bit with what Paul was saying, looking at some of the commercial aspects. But I would also like us to take a look at some of the, the zoning in some of the residential areas as well. What comes to mind right offhand is there's 21 lots that are available in the Desert Highland area. Some of those zonings were previously R2 and they were converted over to R1. So maybe possibly we can get some of those lots reversed back to an R2, which will allow us to be able to have more housing and give more opportunity for multi-unit and residential areas.
Thank you, Commissioner Irvin.
Flynn, do you want?
Yeah, I think that's an excellent suggestion and I think that's also something that we should forward to the General Plan Steering Committee to look at as well.
We, we've, we have looked at the, the land that was going to be the college land and looked at that on the General Plan Steering Committee with an initial proposal for the borders to be R2 and the, the bulk of it to be R1. And the Steering Committee recommended, I don't know where that will go, that we actually look at R2 for all of that with suggestions coming from one of the members that lived in, or that came from Desert Highlands Gateway. So that's, that's another piece. But we can forward this through the General Plan Steering Committee and we can get this to the consultants. I know that one of the issues we talked about is HCD generally wants to see larger parcels, but we have some, you know, the rezoning, possible rezoning of some of the smaller parcels could also help with the housing burden. And it's something that we wanted to look at and we asked for a read from, to get, have the consultants get a read from HCD on that in terms of whether that'll, they'll accept that in terms of the housing element itself.
Yeah, and also if you can, the, the project is outside, but infield in the community, there's lots there. So there, there's an opportunity for growth there inside of the community. You know, with, with some of the lots and some of the streets and lots inside of that community were R2 before. And for some reason, the city removed some of those R2s to R1s. But I, I guess it was to deal with the need at that particular time. But we're having major issues with housing. That, that could be very effective with duplexes and also fourplexes to bring residential to our community.
I'll make sure that that gets before, before the General Plan Steering Committee on the housing element and gets discussed. So I'm going to adjourn, if you've finished.
Madam Chair, I have a couple of items for the Commission if you wouldn't mind. So first of all, housekeeping item for our next meeting on the 24th. We have four items on the agenda. One of them is a pre-application. We've received a pre-application submittal for the development of a million square foot distribution facility in the I-10 corridor. So based on the size of the project, we thought it would be important to bring that before the Planning Commission for discussion. So we would like to do that as a study session item and begin that at 4:30 if you all are available and if that's appropriate. On the regular agenda, we have one conditional use permit for a cannabis business. We have the item that was continued tonight, which was the annual update to the zoning code. That discussion, I don't believe will be too lengthy, we'll present you the information on the, the two issues that we discussed. And then the third item on the regular agenda would be the discussion on the revisions to the architectural review process. So again, we have one study session item, a pre-app, pre-application that we would like to do at 4:30 and then begin the regular meeting at 5:30. Does that work for you all?
Flynn, one of the, we learned the last time, it's a study session that is only an hour long, may not be long enough. And I don't know if people who, the people who are working here can do a four o'clock meeting.
I just checked my calendar, Madam Chair, I believe I can get that time off.
What date is it?
Be Wednesday, the 24th.
Give me a second, I'm looking at the calendar as well.
I have a question. I, Flynn, didn't you have in your email to us that this discussion of architectural review process would be a study session item for the next meeting?
Because we already have a study session item, what I thought would be most effective is if we put it on the end of your regular agenda as a discussion item instead of trying to have a, you know, three and a half hour long study session.
So we're going to have a three and a half hour last item of the Planning Commission?
Yeah.
I'd rather have it earlier in the day because it'll be, you know, I don't know. I'd rather have it as a study session item, but I know that's a question of can people get, you know, can we do it at three or whatever, but?
Or can we do it in two separate meetings?
Right. Right.
Four would be okay for me, but three is pushing it.
So Madam Chair, it sounds like 4:00 PM will work for the start of the study session, and then we'll start the regular meeting at 5:30.
And Flynn, if we don't get, we don't finish the AAC issue, can we look at an alternate date on that?
Yes, as the Planning Commission, you may schedule a special meeting if you would like to do that.
If the Distribution Center doesn't take an hour and a half, can we roll some of that discussion into before the actual meeting?
Yeah, we might be able to do that. Let me just confer with the city attorney in terms of how we might put that on the agenda and the ability to roll it to the regular agenda. But certainly we can look at that, so we use our time effectively. Okay, if there are no other questions about that, we will start our next meeting on the 24th at 4:00 PM with a study session. The last item that I have for you this evening, there were some comments made about the professionalism of staff at last, the last meeting of the Planning Commission. One of the things that I want to make the Planning Commissioners aware of, in terms of staff formulating our recommendations and our evaluation of projects and our findings, we do forward those to the city attorney to review our staff reports and our findings and our resolutions. Our city attorney is well-versed in land use law, and so we look to our city attorney to provide guidance. Many times, Mr. Priest will say, "Your findings aren't strong enough," or "You need to correct this, you need to correct that." And we certainly appreciate the direction that is given to us by the city attorney. And again, we look to him, if there is anything in our staff report or recommendation that is out of line, that he will identify it and work with us to make corrections. So I just want to make it very clear that our city attorney serves an important purpose in reviewing the work of staff and making sure that the findings that are made both by staff and by the Planning Commission are correct, and so that way we have projects that can be approved, are approved appropriately. One of the other things I want to comment on is that staff and the Planning Commission and City Council is a system of checks and balances. I've been working as a planner for over 25 years, and as many people complain about the discretionary review process, in my experience, there is a great benefit to having actions reviewed by the Planning Commission and by City Council that we work together in terms of a system of checks and balancing in reviewing development and making sure that things are appropriate for the community. So I just wanted to offer those comments to you, and again, I appreciate your service on the Planning Commission, you serve an important role, and we always look to work effectively with you in the future.
Well said, Flynn, thank you.
The Planning Commission is adjourned until 4:00 PM for a study session, a special meeting of the Planning Commission on February 24th, 2021.
Thank you, good night.
Night, everyone. Thank you.